First on the agenda obviously is to approve the minutes. Does that have a sense of vote? And if so, are we in for a motion? I think motion to approve the minutes. Motion by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Jeff, any other minutes? No, that's the utility rate advisor.
We didn't do anything with the utility rate advisor. Actually, obviously approving the claims. Do you not even take a motion? Make the motion to approve the claims. Motion by Jeff.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? I guess now we'll open the public hearing on the electric charging station rate ordinance.
Yeah, last meeting you introduced ordinance number two thousand twenty-two zero one and advertised it for a public hearing. That ordinance is an ordinance, amending ordinance two thousand thirteen dash thirty-five to establish an electric vehicle charging station tariff in the city of Honeyberg Electric Rites and Charges. As you recall, the variable usage was eleven cents per kilowatt hour. First hour, there is no parking charge. But after, for the second and third hours, it's two dollars and fifty cents per hour. After the third hour, it's five dollars per hour, plus of course the variable kilowatt hour usage. Today is the time place set for public comments. Was advertised or do we advertise or not?
Do we have any public comment? I've seen that or heard that.
So, something I had a like comment after we learned that an hour charge is only eighteen miles. Then the road may have to look at that longer duration parking fee if somebody's mouth down. It's been said that for five hours.
Yeah. Hopefully, they won't wait till they get down to eighteen miles before they decide to charge.
And I'm guessing if we put more of it, we'll think about upgrading.
Because I know we talked about maybe even doing the higher, the higher rate well and whatever we have to do. If we have to put another one in or something. So, we can always look at that standpoint too. But right now, this is.
It's a good starting point. Yeah, I agree with that.
And, and the, and the technology may.
It may advance so much.
May advance that our charger is well and good. I mean, the batteries, battery technology may catch up with our charger or vice versa.
Right. But you know, you figure fill up a tank of gas, probably fifty dollars today's, today's prices. And that'd be, that'd take ten hours, roughly ten hours charging to equal that.
Yeah.
So, it's not necessarily a bad word.
No, it's just the difference between ten minutes and ten hours.
Exactly.
That, I guess we've got to close the public hearing. I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Motion made to close the public hearing by Glenn.
I'll second the motion.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Now, we have to actually consider the ordinance.
Yes, you've introduced it. So, now it'd be a motion, motion for final adoption.
Right.
I have a motion for that.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Tim.
I'm sitting.
Second by Jose. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Dubon.
Aye.
Kissling.
Aye.
Barron.
Aye.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
This is the resolution to transfer funds from electric gas and water cash reserves to the general fund. For that.
Uh, yeah. Those amounts that are on there are the amounts that we have to put in to the budget.
For the budget, yes.
Transfer from gas reserve funds of those utilities into a general fund. To. Can't find it right off hand here, but.
This is an annual, annual event.
We do this every year.
This is an annual event to rectify the bookkeeping.
Yes.
There it is.
Two hundred and twenty-five thousand.
Two twenty-five, one hundred. Yeah, actually, water is, is, is now. We were prohibited for as long as we had the electric rate. Electric loan. And that's paid back. We're not.
So, we just need to approve the resolution. Is that correct?
Yeah, that would be.
Resolutions.
Resolution. Two hundred, two thousand twenty-two zero five.
That's the resolution we have on board, right?
Do you have that one?
Yes. Yeah.
I'll make a motion.
Motion by Steve.
I'll second it.
Second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? This is the resolution authorizing the offering to track for sale and sell the offering price for property located in State Route sixty-four and West Third Street.
I believe you have a survey of that. I know it's kind of fine. There's a little history on this property. Back in the, like, probably late nineties, the city acquired what is now Bee House Park from the O'Brien family. And they, they intended to transfer everything they owned in that area to the city. But after the transfer was made, they kept giving a tax statement for this little strip that wraps around the Third Street intersection there also. And they, they just came to the city and said, hey, we intended to give that to you. We didn't realize you still owned it. So, they quickly handed it to the city. Part of State Route sixty-four right away is, encroaches on that property as well. And it's turn, it turns out that the property owners there are budding that strip. I think it's called North Side Rentals owned by B and A. Contracting. They've got a buyer for the property. Buyer has determined that the, that property doesn't have access to all of Third Street because the city owns that strip of property. In addition, we find that their, B and A is also constructing some improvements on this strip that the city owns. And so, they have an interest in acquiring this. Now, the city can go through somewhat of a truncated process to sell surplus real estate where the real estate comprises in part of a public right of way. And the only legitimate use for that property would be to an abiding landlord. And I think we have that case here. So, but there's still, still somewhat of an arcade process. We still have to advertise for sealed bids. And we have to send notice to all adjoining landowners that this is going to be offered for public sale. The only adjoining landlord would essentially be B and A or North Side Rentals or B and A Construction. And then they have an opportunity to come in and submit a bid. If they're the only bidders that bid and they bid the offering price, then we can sell to them without further ado. But if nobody bids, or if they're the highest bidder and nobody else bids, then we can, we can sell to the highest bidder. It can come back, you would have to come back to you to do that. The only, there would be a little bit of a change on this survey. If you look, there's, there's an adjoining property owner on the south side. And it's very hard to see, but the name of the owner is Ramirez. He also abuts a little bit of a triangle of property that we own there. And so, it's been proposed that, that, that little triangle not be offered for sale at this time to B and A because he may at some point have the same issue, the same problem. So, it's being proposed that that little triangle will be locked off. And only that strip surrounding the B and A property will be offered for sale. It has been appraised by Galloway, Brooks Galloway, Brooks Galloway, licensed mill state appraisal for fourteen thousand dollars. It's being suggested that that's what the, the offering price to establish of fourteen thousand dollars in that resolution we have before.
At the end of the circumstance, we didn't have to get two appraisals.
We didn't have to get two appraisals because of its limited value. And the fact that it's, and the fact that its only use is to an abiding landlord. It's only conceivable use is to an adjoining budding landlord.
And just so I know, Brooks Galloway is one of the views of several of the things we just recently have done. But he's been relatively very fair with the pricing of the thing. So, I think the price is probably a good price, but.
My, my question relates to the triangle in front of whatever lot fifty-one on the map. Or I think, I'm in favor. Blacken that off there. So, where that could be sold to him or something.
Yeah, I guess Phil mentioned.
Was that, is that, was that?
Yeah, that's being worked on today. The, the surveyor was going to go out and redraw that.
And draw that line.
Redescribe the property. To exclude that little triangle.
Okay.
That guy may have the same problem.
Yeah, he may not. If he wants to sell it in two years or twenty years, he may have the same issue where.
According to the surveyor, the buyer doesn't have potential, either budding landlord, doesn't have a problem. He's okay.
That's, that's, yeah, that's, you probably have a little interest to them. So, Phil shows a driveway there.
The appraisal doesn't show that. So, will the appraisal amount be adjusted if that gets?
My understanding is, the people that are interested, it doesn't make any difference. They need, they need.
So, basically, we're not going to drop the price.
Yeah, so, and I think that's probably smart too. But then that little triangle that we are going to change, would we then approach that landowner and just?
We could, or we could wait to find out whether or not that's even an issue. Or we could just give them an easement over that so that they, if it does become an easement, I mean, an issue, it is an easement. I'm not sure we ever need it. You see, we, there's a triangle at the northwest, northeast side of Third Street intersection that we've also locked off of this property. It's hashed out there as an exception in case we improve that intersection there. We may need more additional room to improve that intersection. And then we own everything on the west side of that.
Where the country club has their side right there.
Right.
Now, I'm assuming this picture is not a hundred percent accurate?
Uh, yeah, the lines aren't a hundred percent accurate. It's just super, the, the aerial, the jet.
Yes.
And that's just a super.
Super pose.
Over G I S aerials. It's, it's a pretty good attempt, but it's probably not perfect.
Yeah, well, just because it shows the, the joining landowner's driveway being part of the sale in this picture, you know?
It could be, they can work that out. It could be, I, I mean.
Yeah.
City has surveyed it. It's the, the property owner that's interested in it has paid for the survey.
Okay.
So, basically, what we need to do is authorize a, a resolution to put it up for, for sale, basically.
That's correct. So, I will publish the notice.
So, we can publish the notice.
And get notice to the landlord. Two thousand twenty-two zero six.
Are we in for a motion?
I'm making a motion to introduce twenty-two, twenty twenty-two dash oh six.
It's, it's just a resolution, so it can be passed on one.
Going to be passed?
Yeah.
I'll second.
Motion by Steve. Second by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
It has a, has a roll call.
They have a roll call.
Kissling.
Aye.
Bounce.
Aye.
McBarron.
Aye.
Dubon.
Aye.
Ware.
Aye.
Five eyes, no names.
With that, I think Mr. Rudakeller is up.
Hello, John.
Hi, John.
Counselor.
John.
Gas side. Been bringing services. And three members of the company have been doing testing online. Part of three years. The other three did their past years. But the three have been working on that. Been working on meter inspections. Doing daily checks on our regulator stations for cold weather. Just make sure things are good working operation. We have a quote for census sonic meters. These are the commercial meters. Last council meeting, I went over the residential meters. And we have a picture. Last week, we did have a commercial meter go out on us. See the picture, a picture of the old diaphragm meter. Replaced it with a Sonic Smart Meter. We had one in stock. The water had one in stock. Just a Sonic meter, we can get the diaphragm. So, we got that order to replace one that we had in stock. We did get a quote for three twelve meters, they called and said they had twelve coming in. First come, first served. So, I took twelve meters, let's say the commercial meters. There's smart ones, twelve of them. Plus the meter bars. Thirteen thousand, one seventy-six. When they did get them in, they'll be shipping to us. Right now, we're down to one or two commercial meters. Would you like to approve, what you said, the twelve Sonic commercial meters? The only one that's, is territorial, the Sonic, so pretty glad to get three quotes. That's why we only have the one quote.
Any discussion before we make the motion?
If you can find them and you can get them, I guess you better buy them.
Better buy them.
I need them. Any motion for that?
Yeah.
I'll make, go ahead.
I'll make a motion for, motion by Tim.
I'll say that.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Last council meeting, we did order a hundred. Paid approval to order a hundred residential smart meters. Next morning, we called. The buyer won't be here till the end of May. We may not get to pull a hundred. They're going to ship whatever to get to us the end of May. And last year, we did add forty-seven customers to our system, thirty-five back in twenty twenty with the subdivision going, starting up in west of Jasper before the Arlen area. Plus Hunter's Crossing. So, I look for twenty-one, twenty twenty-two. Fifty more plus new customers coming on this year. Time, lead time on all these meters. I was kind of wanting to start a meter replacement program, just like the water has been doing with those smart meters. But with all the lead times, I think it's just going to be put off for about a year or two until we get back to so-called normal. Whatever normal is going to be in another year or two. Basically, we're just going to have to keep up with our new customer meters.
Does, do you normally have an idea in mind what a meter's life is? Is it going to last twenty years, ten years?
Yeah, it didn't point at the smart meter.
And that, that, that old one that you replaced, it's got the photo in here. How old was that one?
Twenty years. I think I got one downtown here I'm going to have to replace too. This, one point five years. Replace them out. Don't move the parts or anything.
Are these?
We got the twenty years.
If I recall right, are these, are these leak checked annually on the commercial side? And the residential, or, or, or is that part of your survey or whatever?
Leak survey.
The leak survey, you do the commercial side annually and you do the residential, you split up or something?
Residential is every, split up four years. Do all businesses every year.
You do the commercial side every year.
What about calibration? Is there any calibration anymore? I want you to put it in or it's done?
I thought if I remembered that, the commercial side we have, that, that was part of the leak survey annually. So, that part is always checked.
Always. Business district, that, that is part of the federal law.
We normally wait till one fails before we, we replace it? Or is there a replacement strategy, like at the end of twenty years, we replace it anyway?
Like I say, in a perfect world, both replacement every ten years, diaphragm meter. Home's out and two or three years over, replace it. But now, we're going to be replacing with the smart meters. So, that's going to help us a little bit with transformation, diaphragm to smart meter. Any questions on the gas side?
So, when you want to place the meter, the gas meter, so you have to send a letter to the, on their house? Or how, how they, they know?
If nobody's home, we put a, we'll knock somebody by the door before we change the meter. We shut the meter off. Give a hang of tag on the door for them to call this number before you come turn it on and do the relights.
Hopefully, you don't do that on very cold days. Hopefully, you don't do that on a very cold day.
We don't.
Just today. Unless it's, unless it fails.
Yeah. Yeah, that's understandable. Be sure.
Summertime.
Okay.
Right.
Disappointed. Thank you.
Electric side.
I know. Thanks for, for the show.
Three meters have been, the electric crew, they did set before they pulled down eleven hundred down to St. Henry. And we've been working on our inventory and some of the crews been out with cold issues. Going around. So, we did, we have the spec shooters. Did replace two critical poles out by the I G eight. About seeing that last.
It's been leaning, it's been leaning for a while.
If you can see, you have a pretty good lean to. Went further at, was no way to support from the backside with that parking lot. Turn there to drive through. All the pole was toward the highway. And pole for nineteen eighty-six, poles. You see, they had a good lean to. Always, maybe there are some storms coming through. That would be a major mess. Move on so we're not getting injured. You know, so we did replace them with our ductile iron pole that we ordered. Even the critical line there. It's a critical situation. So, you don't want a big mess in the highway like that transformer wall. Be a major mess.
Yeah, road was brutal that one.
Yeah.
Are they, are they more rigid?
That's what I was going to ask you.
They're more rigid, they have more lateral strength?
Yeah.
Being next to the road, what's, will they take somewhat of an impact? Obviously.
Yeah. That's what they say. Take an impact and they'll still stay standard. Directly in that, after the sideswipe.
Right.
Be a good chance they'll be staying up.
The deal.
The more wood is, for a good jar, you may end up. If you look on one pole falls, it's like a domino, you'll have several in the highways.
Do you have any others in town in that kind of condition that's on the radar?
Well, we've been pretty proactive and we've replaced. Last ten years, probably replaced six hundred poles. We've moved the place several, installed several ductile iron poles.
A lot of your primaries, you've been really working on, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that's where, that's where those taller poles all go, I think.
It'd be better, two critical pole in the main line and just the circumstances, something would happen, it'd be a major disaster. I would be close for a long, quite a long time. And we need approval. I do have the I N A yearly fees, nine thousand seventy-six dollars and fifty-eight cents. It's a yearly total. I'd like to get approval for. Goes to I N D A. They do our training, safety training.
I'll make a motion to approve that. I don't know if we have an option.
Yeah, really. Motion made by Glenn.
I'll second it.
Second by Steve. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
We have last meeting, I got approval to get posts for wooden poles. We did go out, we did go out and post. Just for three semi loads. Some of our pole sizes, we're getting down to a low inventory plus the cost. Just, we worked some back in July, twenty-one. That same pole that we got pulling out, went up a hundred seventy dollars a pole.
Oh, yeah.
Now, we're projected to go up, take another twenty percent. So, I thought it'd be a good idea to. It's all right, pretty good down there.
Plus, they're making you change the chemical.
Yeah. That's still, the gas supplier down there, it's, it's kind of been put off a little bit, but I know it's coming.
Yeah. These are still pending?
Yeah.
Yes.
We have one from C C A.
Yes.
Two companies, they did look at the freight, lift the holes. One had a lower bid, has a freight separate. See, I have highlighted Brownwood, forty-five thousand, three hundred and five dollars. Notice what the shipping is on three semis, almost six thousand dollars.
Yeah, that's your grand semi.
The shipping has gone up quite a bit. Also, the other two companies, they have put shipping throughout, also the pole. But they are still below us back.
Is there a, is there a reason not to go with the lowest bid? Because one of the other suppliers of.
Browns are pretty good.
Browns, Browns are a good company and everything. I'm just asking, because I mean, they're fifty bucks a bar or something.
Last time we got some from Brown, you know, Brown and Thompson, Brown's a pretty good pole.
Okay. I know Thompson comes to mind. I just don't know if that.
Many times, like fourteen weeks. Poles.
I guess that's what they're claiming.
Yeah.
They're still, they still got roots up, right?
Yeah, they got a grow on.
As they're telling you.
Have we any motion for that?
Brownwood for forty-five thousand, three hundred and five dollars.
Motion made.
Motion made by Steve. Seconding. Second by Jeff. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Any questions on the electric?
Yeah, John, you want to fill in a little bit about what's going on behind the gas line? I know we've kind of looked at more information out about moving those poles and stuff there. And they would counsel like to know about that too.
You know, we, we can contact the P S E and Specter. Hold it late. By next week, they will all be off the old poles. And we're going to remove the old poles, so the street park can install their storm sewer. And if storm sewer goes, we'll, you know, when the gas needs to be there, we service the back of the buildings. They got all the main truck lines running, so now we're running the service route to the village. Start from the P S E both. I got an email back from the P S E and said we're going to send two crews in Thursday and Friday. Heard he said he's got a lot of splicing to do.
Yeah.
So, he's going to send two crews in Thursday and Friday. Hopefully, take everything down early next week. Specter should be finished up next week too.
And we, we kind of informed a little bit, once the station starts doing the storm water, those poles are going to come down anyway. So, if they don't take their stuff off, they maybe have to pick it up off the ground.
Yeah. At the on the ground. Well, we gave enough notice. I have a, a question regarding, you're talking about changing, putting a new gas service, are you putting new service lines or new main in there?
New work.
And after they move the poles and put the storm sewer in it?
The poles still?
They put, they put plastics, main line in and you're going to put, replace the service lines?
Yeah.
Will the meters still be out in the, you know, out in the walking paths of the terminal? What will the meters be like with that?
Meter, I would say, were the same place.
Yeah, aren't they?
They're back in the cove for like, you know, the apartments.
Yeah. They're not, they're, I can't remember. They're not right there where.
No.
They're in the path, they're not in the.
I don't think they're going to get past the drive.
On the back of the building, they're going to be getting a lot wider now. A lot safer. Gas, I've got them down the pipe.
Yeah, it's very, and that's what, it comes to mind that they're, they're just hanging out there. But I know that's going to change some. Maybe they won't be in the travel lane now.
Cut it off, run all the last, there's a valve on one of the meters that's, it's an old plug valve. So, that'd be replaced. What you're just replacing, plastic.
Get upgraded, that whole, that whole section.
Well, the mains and services, and that's where they hopefully meet.
Yeah, someday.
I'd do it again.
Thanks for the effort, John.
Thanks. Back on the gas, going to ask a question.
Yeah.
I know, I know that you go, relight the furnaces after you change the meter. And I know once it's a meter to the house, it's their responsibility. Will we check their gas line, the meter inside the house, once we're in there?
Do we check their gas line, the meter inside the house, once we're in there? Make sure there's a leak or no leak?
We don't check all the plumbing. Uh, but if there's a leak, we'll go investigate.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. If you're in there anyway, would you check it over there or not?
Yeah, we usually, we take our.
Take your meter in, yes. Make your sniffer in, yeah. I mean, it just might stop a problem.
It stands, it stands for reason. It's long. After, after it leaves our side, I guess they.
It's their responsibility.
It's their responsibility, but.
We found one last month. There was two leaks inside the house.
Yeah, I can believe that. There's been lots of.
That's why we hope they call in if they smell the odor of gas. And taking to that, uh, starting probably March, and all of your utility bill mailers, will be seeing a four-year survey for the gas department. Required by federal law, there are four years, it's inevitable survey, new utility bill. So that will be coming, hopefully, if we're all contacted and all our customers, all our right-of-way customers that have gas near their property, but they won't have the gas in their, in their system. So I'll send them a letter. So we come out in March.
I noticed in the IMPA newsletter that Raj Rao, the CEO, is retiring. Um, or do we have any plans as a, should we have plans as a city to send something acknowledging his, what, thirty-some years in, in that role?
He's retiring in April.
Although we haven't, we've not decided anything to do that way. So if you all want to do that, we certainly can make arrangements for that. It's up to you guys.
I don't know what it would be, but I think it would be a nice gesture.
I think he's been very, uh, very, very helpful to us to allow us to, to grow our systems and, and provide some expertise from there.
Been very good to work with. He's really helped I N D A out a lot.
Yeah.
I'll put it down. Check it out.
Okay, thank you. Has there been any talk about who his replacement's gonna be yet?
They have a committee, they formed a committee to do some interviews. I got a, uh, a little insight to maybe somebody within the IMPA person, maybe take over.
Most likely.
They know the system, they know the company.
Mm-hmm. Okay.
Uh, there's a Dirk, Dirk is with him, right? There's a Dirk with him, you know? Yeah, he's a little bit, I talked to him the other day and he said they, I don't feel I really know Jay's gonna be, but they all have their feelings about who it's gonna be, but handle it, so. Anything else for John?
Maybe it's James.
Thank you, John.
Hi, John. Jerry.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening. Our distribution, we've got toll duty services since our last meeting, since it's six and hundreds crossing with six in Chestnut Gardens. We got a water main break in Leland and Twenty-first Street intersection, January ninth. And the following day, Monday, we had another water main break in Piper G with Second Street. No more explanation other than cold. Just the ground fluctuates. The, uh, we have been storing our pipe outside of Third Street Lot. And it's, over the years, we've wasted a lot of material. Anytime a pipe gets sun faded, we're not allowed to put the ground, it's not the one whole pressure anymore that the pipe's ready for. So, uh, the, uh, the guys got together, I got with Jason Solm, and he gave us a little bit of room out there at their cold storage building in the street department. And, uh, guys built a pipe rack out there and we've got the, our good water mains from Third Street, we got there. And also, we, uh, kind of bought a little extra water main over the last few months, just due to pipe shortage. So we've got all that built and taken out there. With that, we've, we're still kind of in the process of cleaning up that first year lot, your little pipe hole out. Got rid of, uh, and, uh, our water towers are due for inspection this year. We have to have them done every five years. So we've, uh, we had some stuff stored in them. We're not allowed to have things stored in them without, so we've been getting that, we've been getting all that stuff cleaned out. We've got them all, all cleaned out and, uh, Pittsburgh tanking tower was coming, their last inspections. Um, I've got them, they're supposed to be getting back with me, should be here in February, come in and do that. They bring a robot with them that's disinfected, put in the tower. They inspect inside the tank while it's full and, uh, report back any issues we can serve with that, so we'll be waiting for their reports.
Were we looking to paint one of them up there in the house or the east side of town or is that?
Well, the, the last inspection that we had, it just hadn't, they needed to be washed, they wouldn't need perfection on the paint. So, uh, we, uh, we did have it washed, we kept, we re-washed the tower. But, uh, as far as the paint goes, we're into this inspection today. Uh, not really sure on that one. I know the last one, we had, we had washed, uh, painted was the south tank in, I believe that was in two thousand thirteen or fourteen. All top of my hair. And, uh.
Yeah, that's cool.
The, uh, other, other than that, it's one of the time, we try not to dig open any more hates, any services. So we've, uh, years back around the Moknet area, they moved a lot of dirt in there, had a lot of dirt in that area. They, uh, a lot of the ash trees over there, they buried them about four foot deep from the level that they were. It killed all of them. So we've been spending some time over there, getting the dead trees out. We planted about seven hundred fifty new trees last year with the E N R program. Uh, and then spread out through there as well, it's around the lake also. So just trying to get the dead ones out while the ground's frozen, so the other trees have some chance to grow. Uh, other than that, as far as distribution goes, just trying to keep our stuff maintenance the time of year and be ready to go whenever we need it. Any questions on distribution side?
What was done on Fourth Street? Is that for that sidewalk?
Oh, that was a gas.
Oh, that was gas.
We replaced valve.
We played a lot that we did though was there or something?
Valve, we didn't move it, it covered it.
That was part of the sidewalk project, yes.
Little plug valves.
Yeah. I didn't, I didn't, they did it on Sunday. Or Saturday, they did it on the weekend.
Yeah, we had to be, the take care of.
Yeah. Okay.
We shut it down.
It just occurred to me, I saw him out there on Saturday and I thought, well, that's usually, that's usually an emergency or an unusual situation.
We shut the take there again.
You're off the hook, Jerry.
All right. Uh, filtration plant, we've, uh, we've had another leak in our, we meet some wall. We kind of spoke about that at a meeting pass. We, we had that leak repaired. And we now have, we, well, this one repaired also as of now. But, uh, we had another leak spring in that wall, we brought, I've had Midwest Engineering in and they looked at it and we're trying to come up with a solution. And, uh, Brad replaced water. He also brought this guy in with the company that makes the chemical or the epoxy to repair the cracks, to kind of, get a game plan for a long-term fix. Uh, we kicked their wall out, or we won't be able to drink water, so we've got to come up with an alternative. But we got that taken care of. Um, kind of, when we did the water plant, we had it on addition out there, moved some chemicals to different areas. So the ice, eye wash stations that we had set up the plant, some of them had to be moved. Some, some areas no longer needed eye wash stations, other areas needed them but didn't have them. So we've been working on that. Uh, and, uh, there was part of the plant that, whenever the, that day took place, wasn't painted. And it's looking kind of rough, so we've been getting all that taken care of. It kind of spruced up too, to go along with the rest of the plant. Uh, the only other thing that I didn't add on there is, uh, we're trying to get all of our ADA compliant stuff in order. So we've been working on that as well out there as well. That's, uh, that's pretty much our filtration. Our metering system is still holding steady. We had six jails this week, which is a little out of normal, the leather, it's, uh, they say that atmospheric pressure affects that as well, so. Uh, that's enough, anyone that's interested in that. There, there's some other business down here that I want to talk to you guys about. I spoke to Phil Schneider about it, uh, Carl Goodman, the I D M, and I personally spoke with the mayor about it. Uh, years past, the city sent Luke Rashi to class in Indianapolis to be certified in, uh, backflow cross-contamination. Uh, with that, with that certification, we hold the I D M. We can test our own R P Ts, uh, with our backload devices that have to have certification every year. Uh, just rough, rough figures. Uh, a year, we spend about thirty-three hundred dollars in testing to have ours certified. Uh, the park also has two of them. Dale told me that he, if he remembers right, it's around six hundred dollars to have his two tested a year. And wastewater, uh, they've got about the same amount we have. Brad told me to have those numbers offhand as far as money-wise goes. But, uh, we can buy the equipment to do ourself for just a little under fourteen hundred dollars. And, uh, we could, we could say not only the water department, but, I mean, as far as I'm concerned, you have free service to wastewater parks as well, same to city water. Bill and Steve both said that it's something that bring up to the council. I don't necessarily know if he's motion, you just, uh, get your raises on, allow us to do it.
Do you have an actual estimate as far as what that, that equipment would cost? I mean, do you have a lock lip now or something?
As far as what we pay.
No, what's for the equipment?
Hopefully, yeah, it's, uh, I do, I have, um, the company that actually does all the certifications is Test Gage. Uh, the equipment quote for that was one thousand three hundred fifty-six dollars and forty-four cents. We will have to get that sent off and certified every year. If it's under a hundred dollars, you get the gauge certified. So, I mean, it would cut our costs in half just water alone.
Yeah. So if that's a low number, do we need approval?
It's under five thousand dollars for mobile operations.
I bet it.
I think it's a great idea.
I think it's a good money.
The universal doesn't suit. So are you, will, will we have to use this, his license then or?
Right, and he did, when he, when he got, me and, me and Luke spoke about it, whenever he got the certification, he was, he got paid for this order. And I, one of the reasons he was, it was never.
Used.
Used, I don't know, but, uh, I just found out about it about a month ago. So as soon as I found out about it, I started crunching some numbers. I think it'd be a great asset.
I agree.
I agree.
That's, sky's the limit with that. Evansville, they, they do all their own testing on the businesses as well. Uh, all the businesses in the city have to have those spectacles here as well. Uh, we run a third-party company that's recording on that. And basically that's recording whatever people are passing through. Uh, so they have to be contacted, they need to shut the water off or perhaps it's escaping promptly. So that's, uh, that's something, I don't want to look at that now, but in the future, we need to look at starting our own program with that, where we do, everybody in our waters, you do, you service their oil and just charge five feet for that. So it'd be really good for the city to take your water and make sure they're all kept up long, in the near term.
I doubt it's no brighter. I have a charry pedal.
I'm blocking.
Do you have an estimate, how many, uh, how many cross-contamination units there are in the city?
I figured out that I'd have to, I'd have to sit down. We, we have, uh, just the water department ourselves, they have eleven of them. Uh, Brad says he probably has to send them out. Every, uh, commercial business has to have one. Uh, that's restaurants, airheads, we want that, so there's, there's a lot of them. It would, it potentially, if it was something we needed to, eventually show need for another forty as well, they'd have two, three people doing this year round.
How much time do you think it would take for, uh, him to do those tests?
Uh, as long as nothing is to be rebuilt, he finds nothing wrong. As far as setting up the gauge, he could probably be one within a half hour and be comfortable as far as time goes. With those, you know, finds anything wrong, as far as rebuilding them. They're, they're built of rubber diaphragms, springs, check balls, things of that nature. So it's not, it's pretty upfront as far as they make it sound.
Any other questions for Jerry? Thank you.
Thank you.
Dale?
I have none.
Oh.
I think.
Any other items to be brought upon council? Any items from the citizens?
Make a motion, do you hear?
I'll say.
Motion by Glenn to jury, seconded by Tim. All in favor?
Aye.
Oppose? Thank you, everybody.